So the big hand is straight up, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And a quorum is established with all committee members present. And in addition, Ms. Duffield and Jim Wykold and Ms. Dodson are also participating. The chairman's report, I have, anything that I have is specific to the agenda items for today. So we'll just move on from that, but I'll ask if there is public comment.
Do not have any public comment to read at this time.
Sorry, I'm sorry Haley, I didn't hear you.
I don't have any public comment to read at this time.
Okay, fine, thank you. And I don't see, well, I don't have visibility to any attendees, so.
There's no attendees rating, raising their hands.
Okay. All right, that being the case, then we'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. And the singular item that we have on the consent agenda is consideration to approve the August 25 regular meeting minutes. Are there any changes, adjustments, corrections that anyone has for the meeting minutes? I don't see or hear any, so that being the case, is there a motion to take action on the consent agenda? And a second?
A second.
Okay, so it was moved by Marvin and Ted was the second on that. And may I have a vote by hands, please? Yay. Thank you, and opposed, apparently not, as they were 5-0. So we will move on then to regular business. And the first item of business that we have was the review of the policy, the budget policy revisions that we had suggested in our conversation at our last meeting regarding the subject. And Ms. Duffield was going to be going away to create a, basically a red line to incorporate the comments and suggestions that were made by the committee and has provided us with that in the package itself. And I guess I'll ask first if there's anything that Ms. Duffield would like to address as far as the document that she provided and then ask for feedback and comments also from the committee members. So Ms. Duffield.
Sure, good morning, everyone. So I, as Chair Pidel said, I did a redline version of all the changes we discussed during the last meeting. The one item that's still outstanding is the next item on our agenda today, which is the discussion about the allocation of administrative overhead. I didn't make any changes to that area, so out of our discussions today, you know, there may be need to make some further changes. Otherwise, what you see is based on our discussion from the last meeting.
Okay, so if I can, I'd like to ask a clarification. If what comes out of our conversation with the overhead allocation, or administrative allocation, generally, I believe that the changes, if there are any that would come out of that, would not be applied until our next fiscal budget, which would be 2122, unless there was something significant in the structure that changed that said that it would require immediate incorporation into the budget that's already been approved for this fiscal year. Is that an appropriate statement, Ms. Duffield, or can you clarify?
That's correct, so the board has already adopted the budget based on the allocation structure that was put in place, I believe, in fiscal year 1718. That is the same application, and as we go through the allocation overhead process, you'll see those same concepts that were used in creating the budget for this fiscal year for 2021. So you're correct, we would just, my recommendation would be to incorporate those changes with, you know, it still has to go through the board for board support, any recommendations that finance would have, but to take those recommendations to the board and make those changes in the next fiscal cycle. But again, it's up to the board. If the board feels strongly that they want to make that change, that's totally their prerogative, and, you know, they can make that change. It would require a budget adjustment, you know, that would ripple across all the funds if they were, you know, to change the allocation method, so, but that's definitely the board's prerogative.
Right, and the other thing that would balance to that, that I'd have a little bit of concern about is the fact that we're going through and setting up new accounting systems, and if there's a restructure that would have to be taken into account during the process, so putting that into place, there might be a complication. Ted?
I was just gonna say that I don't see any reason that this group would want to make a recommendation for, for any change in the overhead allocation for, for the current year. You know, that would just add confusion in terms of anybody who wants to try to measure the actuals against, against the budgets.
I have to agree completely, and so maybe the fact that there are no changes as far as the overhead allocation is concerned for this markup that we're looking at is probably appropriate, and if for some reason that were to change after we go through the second part of this, we could certainly come back to it, but any potential changes, the overhead allocation could be handled as revision to this policy, this budget policy, if and when that evolves and is accepted by the board, so. Okay, is there anything?
I think Marvin has his hand up.
Oh, I apologize, thank you, Marvin.
Just a question for Pam, as I look at the four bullet points, the four criteria, the fourth one, based on an interview with administrative personnel, is there any effort to actually track the amount of time that they spend for each department? Or is this just, you know, my feeling at the time?
I'm sorry, I don't know where you're looking at.
It's under the overhead allocation will take into account four criteria. The fourth one down, there are four bullet points, the fourth one down, recovery based on percent of administrative labor applied to departments as determined by interviewing administrative personnel.
Right, so we will, we will get to that when we discuss the methodology behind how that admin allocation, that's actually the next agenda item. I have a write-up that was provided during the budget process that's in the packet that will hopefully answer that question.
Okay.
So maybe we have these in the reverse order.
That's entirely possible. How do you feel about it? How's the rest of the committee feel about it? Would you like to take a look at the overhead allocation first before looking at the budget policy? Ted?
Well, before we make a jump to, to the allocation process, I'll just say that I think Pam captured very effectively what we discussed last time, and, you know, I guess I don't, I don't see a reason to really discuss the policy further except for the allocation issues.
Okay, so am I hearing preferences from people in terms of how we proceed on this? Well, we'll continue with the, with the agenda, Mary?
Just a, just a small knit, just to be consistent, the U capitalized plans, goals, and resources in the table of contents. So you probably just want to carry that over to 2A. Does that make sense, Pam? It's a knit in the big picture, but just.
Oh, within the policy itself?
Right.
Oh, gosh, I can make that adjustment.
Yeah, just to be consistent, since you changed it in the procedure header.
Yeah, because it's kind of a title.
Yeah, yeah, no, it makes sense.
Yeah.
And I'm good to move on to the other.
Okay, if that's the case, then we'll, we'll go ahead and, I guess I'm hearing, go ahead and go forward with the policy markup, and then we'll go to the overhead allocation? Yes, no? Okay.
So I guess, I know, I'm, I'm good with that, do we need a vote now, or do we just?
No, 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 I just needed to get feedback from the, from the group that, that was what we wanted to do, since we're going to just keep with the agenda as it exists. Okay, Pam, is there anything within the markup that you've provided that is in addition or less than the conversation that we had had originally when we reviewed this at our last meeting?
No, not necessarily, but I would like everybody to, if they could quickly review item E, which is on page eight of your agenda package or four of the policy, because that was new language that was crafted in on the process, and so if everybody could just really look through that to make sure, you know, you agree with how I captured our process.
I'm fine with that, it, it covers the, the concept of capital assets as a total, not just the CIP in it, and it directs or vests the coordination and management of that with the general manager. Anyone else have feedback on it? Okay, any other items that anyone has any comments on before I call for a motion?
The agenda doesn't, doesn't have a provision.
Doesn't say.
Provision.
Okay, so I guess the question is whether that's necessary to pass it forward as a recommendation to the board?
I think it would be necessary. Because this is just discussion.
I think we, I think we have to discuss the allocation methodology and, and be sure that we're all on the same page with that, because that bakes into the.
Okay.
The policy, and then, you know, it, it could be a five-minute item at our next meeting to.
Right.
Make a recommendation to take the policy to the board.
Okay, then we'll move on to the discussion about the allocation of administrative cost. Item B. And Ms. Duffield, you're in the presentation seat initially here for this, please.
I'm in the hot seat today again.
Yeah, well, as usual.
The story of my world. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is item 4B, and that is the review of the administrative allocation process across funds that is used during the budget. So page 11 is the actual worksheet that was provided as a component of the budget that is used to allocate the costs, and the costs are separated by the letter E as an elephant, L as in Larry, and R as in Robert. And there's a little legend at the bottom of the page that show how those costs are allocated. Are they equally allocated to each department? Are they allocated based on department size? Are they allocated based on, you know, the administrative effort that's required to support those departments? So to talk about that further, if you flip to page 13, there's a little excerpt from the fiscal year 1718 budget when this allocation method was established. And it kind of goes and talks about the different categories and how they are established. So in answering Marvin, your question, this is on the very first page. This is the allocation based on the staffing, like how much support we're giving to each department, based on actual employees, which I probably need to update that formula moving into the next fiscal year, because this was based on a total of 28 and a half staff members. And we have added, you know, a couple positions in the last, you know, as a result of the rate study to water and to wastewater, so we have had a few position changes there. So I think it's probably something to revisit and get that all aligned for next fiscal year. And then if you flip over to the next page, page 14, this talks again about the formula that's driven on how much administrative staff support each one of the departments, you know, the percentage. Which again, we can do some evaluation and see if these percentages are still correct. I mean, they, they look, they don't look out of line to me when I just glance at them, but again, you know, going back to the work papers that established these thresholds, I mean, would, would be a good, it would be a good review to make sure we're still in line. I know the one item that a couple of the board members keep referring to during the budget process was the amount of allocated overhead that goes to PROs. And so part of the PROs allocation, you can see right here is that one point, what is it, 6% that's sitting out there, so, you know, is that still a good allocation? Should that be reduced? And then the previous page showed there was one full-time employee that's being counted to PROs for parks, wrecks, and open space. So is that still as well a good, because one employee from FNR really dedicated to that?
Now that the skate park's been disassembled, it probably has gone down.
Possibly, but I guess we have to look at globally what facilities does for PROs as a whole, you know, the different type of support that they provide for PROs, which could be the dog park, I guess, it could be, you know, many things across the district that facilities does for PROs-related activities.
Yeah, planning for the restroom and that sort of thing would be probably included, but. Back, you know, if you, if you go back a year and a half or two years, the maintenance on the skate park was actually pretty substantial, and that's why it's not there anymore.
So then the other part of the packet, the last few pages of your agenda are the colorful pages, which are all of the administrative department budget, and all of those items correlate back to page 11 in a summarized version. Those are picked right from the budget. You know, when we look at our different letters of costs, we look straight to the line items in the budget to capture those items.
I was hearing some feedback, and so I had muted myself and forgotten, of course. We're pretty much dealing with the closed circuit numerically in, in terms of the information of the budget and then to the allocation data that's represented on page 11. So the real question is the categorization of costs into the EL and R, and then the associated breakdown in percentages of allocations to individual areas to departments, and whether those are properly aligned. So is there anything that anyone has that they'd like to put forward for discussion or that they see as an anomaly of any kind? So this really doesn't have to do with allocation, but the other thing about the administrative department, which we will eventually have a conversation about also, has to do with how monies are represented and tracked when the interfund loan payments happen. So that's not something that was part of the allocation process that we'll discuss today, but it is another item related to the administrative department that we will have a conversation about when we look at the interfund loan. So Pam, you, you were indicating taking a look at what the percentage distributions would be to, to validate support and with the associated staff headcounts. Now, were you indicating that these percentages that are shown on pages 13 and 14 do not represent the headcount association with the departments as they exist right now, but they're only in reference to what the 1718 numbers were?
That's correct, these would be what was in place in 1718, so I think it would just be a good idea going forward that we review these and make sure they're still accurate.
And probably it's something as a consideration even to, to look at on a yearly basis before the, the budget is approved. The timing would be tough on that, because it's the possibility of headcount changes that would happen, that the budget would be based on. Ted?
You know, the, I think discussing allocation, we, we have formulas that we've used historically, and, and we could tweak the percentages, but the, I think the more fundamental question before we get into those is what really drives the administration? Is it the people in the various departments, the activities of the various departments, you know, the size? You know, when, when I think of administration, we've got, we've got all of the accounting and finance, we've got legal, we've got the personnel and human resource functions, and then we have facilities and, and resources. Pam, am I missing something, you know, just in kind of a general description of what the administrative departments do?
So facilities and resources is not in administration.
Oh, that's right, okay, yeah.
Yeah, they're their own, so it would be the four finance staff, which includes myself, would be the general manager, our district council, any costs or board members stipend that are received, because that all flows through administration as well, and then the district clerk responsibilities, as well as the human resource responsibilities for the district as a whole. So all those functions are part of the administrative budget, and they get spread to all the different departments.
Okay, so if, you know, judging that, that those are, those are what administration does, do these methods of allocation match up well with the functional responsibilities of the administrative department?
I think so. I think they're allocated fairly. I know the question keeps coming up about PROs, because PROs has a very small budget these days. If PROs had, you know, a large capital project that they were working on, the question might not, you know, be raised. You know, if they had a $300,000 project they were working on, the little bit of allocated overhead that they get wouldn't skew their budget so much as what it does now, because their budget's, you know, $30,000 some thousand, and their allocated overhead is almost that same amount, so it just, you know, gives a perception that it's not allocated fairly, I guess, is the perception.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm still struggling a little bit with this, and, you know, it seems like the people in the operating departments are a reason for a large part of the administration, you know, doing the human resources and, and that kind of thing, and yet I don't see anything that is allocating based on headcount.
So the headcount is your first cost. So your headcount is the relative size of the department, so that's going to be your R.
Well, but when we say relative size of department, are we talking about the people or are we talking about the spending?
It's the people, so if you look at page 13, that formula is based on the number of staff in each operational area. that formula is based on the number of staff in each operational area. So that's what I'm saying. We should probably look at this in further detail to determine, you know, is there still 13 full-time equivalents at the fire department? You know, did they have the same staffing in a 1718 that they have today?
Okay, but then, you know, the the R costs are are all other costs. And so, you know, separating out the the cost of providing human resources doesn't necessarily match up with all other costs, does it?
I'm confused by your question. Sorry. Can you say that again?
Well, you've got, you know, you've got a payroll function. You've got the the administration, the human resources function. You know, and so those those are people. That would be that would be salaries. So would those salaries be better allocated to departments based on the number of full-time equivalents in each department?
So let's look at our so if you look at our allocation worksheet, all the salaries are the first line under the L cost. So if we go and look
administrative effort, but you know, the you know, the and I don't remember exactly how it's organized, but you've got Ray, Ray and Melissa, whose effort is 100% applied to the water and wastewater functions where you would have your payroll clerk who's 100% dedicated to providing payroll to each person. And, you know, within that, the complexity of the fire department payroll is probably higher than the complexity of the facilities and resources payroll. So, you know, I mean, I'm just and what, you know, I think the you know, this this approach has been a a good approach to try to figure out what are the things driving cost. But I wonder if it needs to be thought about in perhaps a little more detail throughout the administration department.
Right, and that would be the costs that are listed on page 14.
Can I ask a question?
Those percentages because those are based on the effort of administrative staff to support each one of those divisions or departments.
And Pam, was that actually recently or is that 1718, that percentage? Or is that every year it's looked at?
So these figures here were developed for the 1718 budget. So they were likely actuals from the previous real year that was completed. I'm assuming they were based on things that really occurred in 1617. And these are the same percentages that have been applied against 1718's budget, 1819, 1920, and the current budget of 2021.
Can I ask you a question?
You had a question.
Yeah, Cindy, retirees. Should they be included in this percentage since they are coming out of certain departments?
So they get direct charged to the departments. And the only retiree cost we have is their health benefit. So the only retirees that gets spread against all within the allocated overhead would just be the retirees that were still existing in administration. It would just be the health reimbursement. That's the only retire expense we have.
So it wouldn't be the fire chiefs or any of them? They would not be included?
No, because they get direct charge to that department. Because if you look at the budget for all the different departments
Yes.
within the salaries budget, you will see a line item for retiree health. It's towards the end of all the benefits section in the salary and benefit portion of the budget. And you'll see a line item for all the different retirees and the health contributions that occurs for the different departments.
Thank you.
I'm just wondering, one thing process wise, if going forward, we would want to adjust that page 14, those percentages as a yearly review before we go do a next year's budget to get the last, you know, because right now you're like four years. It's based on four years ago, maybe adjusted every year. Would that make sense?
Yeah, that totally makes sense. It could be something that we review. Like when we when we do the rates, it might be a good, you know, review prior to developing the budget. This is something that we review as well.
Pam, that this goes back to my original question. Looking at these numbers, when when the allocation is based on the percent of effort that the administrative staff provides, is there any way to track or evaluate how much that effort is? Or is it just, you know, I think today I spent our, you know, today I spent half of my day on wastewater. So half of my effort should always be counted as wastewater. Any way to just track the effort that does apply to each area?
We don't have any mechanism to do that. We have no cost accounting virtually in our current system.
I see.
So and if we were going to do that, I mean, you have to pick one or the other. You can't say my on your time sheet, my effort was directed, you know, part to facilities, part to fire, part to water or part to wastewater and directly charge them and then come back and hit them with an allocated overhead. That would, you know, you can't hit them both ways. So you either have to direct charge your effort via every time sheet and every employee has to direct charge it. But then it's going to make it difficult to create a budget when you have no idea what effort, you know, everybody in admin is going to charge. I mean, you have to do it one way or the other. So we can't direct charge and hit them with an allocated overhead. We can't hear you.
Yeah.
There you go.
Sense. Yeah, it makes sense. It's just, you know, it's just how do you, how do you, how comfortable do you feel that the members are are being applied correctly, I guess, is the question.
Right, that's why I said we should maybe revisit it. I'll have to go back and see if I can find the work papers and how this whole methodology was established. I think Chair Stidell thought that maybe there was a committee that was maybe established to do this a few years back when it was established. Oh, I'm not really sure.
Um, I don't know whether it was so much a committee as it was kind of the initial finance committee that was part of it. Yeah, and Ted?
Yeah, it was actually Rudy and you know, well, Rudy brought that to to the finance committee and we reviewed it at the time. You know, and I don't as a committee, I don't think we had any any particular expertise in in second guessing the the percentages. The percentages really had to come from from within. But we did, I think, make recommendations about which accounts in the administrative budget fell within which of the different categories of allocation.
That was my remembrance also, Ted.
So you're thinking that we need to look at all the accounts and revisit what gets categorized as an L and what gets put into the R, which is everything else?
Well, it certainly is worth reviewing that. You know, and I'm not sure that that as a committee we know enough to to be able to second guess what what you're doing. But the the real key is, I think, the percentages and keeping that process or that that review alive on an annual basis. You know, I agree with Mary about that.
So there is one other little part. Let me look at the policy again. So it might have been in the right up at the end there. So page 14, the very last paragraph talks about other revenues that are within the administrative department such as franchise fees and other things that have no place to really flow but administration. So that created some grief in the board meetings this past year with the board members because, you know, fire and facilities were showing a deficit. And their deficit is funded from reserves, which is essentially these revenues from the prior year that aren't spent and get put into reserves. But the general fund admin department shows a surplus. So, you know, that caused some grief through the budget process, you know, thinking that things are not weighed equally. So how we resolve that? I guess that's a good question going into the next year's budget cycle.
So I think that those kinds of things would should be available to reduce the allocation to the general fund departments.
So then you're going to create a bigger charge to the enterprise funds if that occurs? If the goal is to 100% allocate administration?
No, not necessarily. You could you could do the same allocation you've got right now and then have one last piece, which would be allocating the revenues. But the revenues would have to be allocated within the the general fund departments because these things are not related to the provision of water and wastewater services.
So the other thing is in past years, like in 1718, for example, the franchise fees were not even budgeted in the administrative fund. They were budgeted in, I believe, PROS, either PROS or facilities.
It's pretty arbitrary.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it created a lot of angst in some of the board members this time. So it's important to bring it up and and be sensitive to those comments that were made.
Well, the is the board's concern that there's a surplus in administration? Or is the board's concern that you know, that that somehow these revenues should be directly applied to operating departments?
Right, I believe the concern is that fire and facilities have a lot of backlog of projects and things that they're, you know, they keep routinely asking for through the budget process that are not funded. And administration shows a surplus. You know, granted, in the grand scheme of the general fund as a whole, all of that balances out. You know, any surplus during, you know, in the general fund during that given fiscal year offsets any of the deficits that are occurring for funding out of the reserve account. So to me, it just washes each other. And it's just a simple mechanism to display the revenues that are coming in that we can't really, you know, like the payback of interest from the wastewater land. We can't like receive that in the fire department or receive it in facilities and resources. It just doesn't make logical sense. You know, admin is the department that's the catchall for everything. It's not a specific department. So, but but I don't think that the board as a whole, you know, has that mindset or thinks that way, that admin is kind of the catchall for everything that's not fire and it's not facilities and not PROS. That's the only avenue we have to put something in the budget. So if there is a surplus at the end of the year, that goes into reserves and then that is utilized in the next year to, you know, budget out of reserves for fire and facilities. So I don't know.
Well, you could you could also take the approach of the the effort of the, I mean, these are revenues that don't don't come directly from any of the operating department activities. So you could allocate them based on the same view, you know, same understanding of effort applied to each department. And except that it would be just the the general fund departments. And, you know, sort of, you know, credit the general fund departments with the anticipated franchise fees, for instance.
Yeah, but I would be a weird nexus to me to apply those directly to the fire department.
Well, it wouldn't be directly. It would be reducing the administration, the cost of administration.
We have to think about that. It seems convoluted and it won't be very transparent for the public to understand. You know, right now, it's very clear. All the costs get allocated in this fashion. But if we start backing out certain revenues in certain departments, I think that's just going to create confusion.
Seems to me the simplest way to do it is to take that revenue, the miscellaneous revenue in administrative. And then that reduces the allocation that gets charged to the department. So in effect, the departments, all the departments are benefiting for the things that they didn't really contribute to. Seems pretty simple.
But you can only do that in within the general fund.
But you can only do that in, within the general fund. You can't take it out of all the departments.
Right.
It's a matter of what, what's, I mean, if the board's uncomfortable with showing a surplus in administration, then you know, so, some method for distributing the benefit of those revenues to the other general fund departments would address the board's concern. If the board's concern though raises an issue of transparency and another thing to explain to the public, et cetera, then maybe it's, it would be worthwhile pushing back on the board's concern. But you know, you can't, you can't do both.
I just think to me, the general fund has a surplus at the end of the year. That goes into reserves. And then it's utilized in the next budget year to fund the deficit that exists in fire and facilities and pros. I mean, it's just depending what year it happens in. And then you don't have to worry about direct charging. There's not a, you know, you don't have to worry about the nexus to the individual department. It's just in the general fund reserves to be utilized, you know, at the board's discretion in the next budget year.
Pam, but that makes it so hard on your fire chief. Because he plans his budget way out there and then he has to go looking for money. Just like the radios and different things. And maybe I'm not understanding this correctly, but if he had the funds upfront, he wouldn't go asking for grants and different things. Am I incorrect in assuming that?
So the, the fire department's budget is in line and budgeted the same way that all the rest of the departments are budgeted. They're not budgeting in advance of anybody else. They're on the same timeline as the rest of the departments. But I mean, we always want to take advantage of grants, whether it's in fire or facilities or, you know, any avenue, we always want to take advantage of grants.
It's always better to use someone else's money than your own, is what it boils down to. And then
The time, there was a time when chief wanted radios and it was denied. And then he had to go fishing for grants that he could offset some radios.
Right. And, and he was successful in doing that.
But there was
So we faced it in, we faced in that large capital project was faced in over a couple of budget cycles.
And actually, one of them fell through and the reserves were used to be able to facilitate the, the radios.
I think John has his hand up as well.
John?
Yeah, just a couple of points going back to Ted's original discussion around, you know, how to think about these allocations. And there, there is no all, all inclusive formula here, you know, which is why we have these, these formulas depending on the individual line item. But even down to the person. So your example of the payroll, payroll clerk. You're, you're absolutely right. That could be easily allocated by headcount. But there's also, you know, deputy district clerk right now, Haley's role. She split between HR, IT and helping admin and fire and facilities. How, I can't do headcount there. And I may have another day where half the day is devoted to legal of some sort, where she's working with HR issue with both Tim Carmel's office and, and LCW. That, that could suck up and how do I, you know, how do I allocate that? And that's an HR issue. It, it might impact all employees. But it may not. And so and then weighing on top of that, the fact that the crazy general manager is constantly reorganizing the, the staff. And we're going to do that again here in the next couple of months. So that's really going to rejigger roles based on, you know, who we have talent wise and, and what makes sense and how to organize. So just that reorganization that, that I'll do each, each iteration, that probably, you know, clicks off a requirement for an allocation review. Because those headcount numbers that we did in 1718 are now going to, going to be rejiggered maybe a little bit. And then, as it relates to the reserve policy, you know, this, this is another discussion of how that's wrapped into this whole thing because we just presented the CIP list for the general fund to the RNI committee yesterday. It's $5 million. That's more than double the reserves. And our reserves are no, aren't even to the level that we should have for continuing operations, which is, I think, thumbnail, like six months of operations for the whole district. We're, we're not even near that. So there's all these, you know, I don't mean to make it more complex than it already is. But I, I think it has to be a mix of the role that you're performing in admin as well as the, you know, who you're doing the work for and, and the individual issue.
And, and I will caution the information related to the CIP for the general fund and the, the $5 million. That isn't something that needs to happen in the next year. So please, no one walk away with the concept that that reprimands. The other thing is that it, it basically also refers to the, the wish list and needless concept that the original utility CIP list initiated with. And the greater part of any of the cost in that has to do with fire equipment and new fire engines and things that may be in the next five to 10 years down line. So please, please don't feel that that's another crushing blow that we're dealing with immediately.
Cindy, thanks for that disclaimer. You're exactly right. So one of the things I'm trying to do, when I got in here, we had no long-term financial planning mechanism. What am I buying three years from now that has to be in that budget in 2023? I had no way to know that. So we're, we're slowly but surely building out a longer term financial planning mechanism. So that in 2023, I know that I'm going to be replacing a truck that year. And five years later, a fire engine's going to be needed. You know, these are the kind of things we can inject into the annual budgets. But we'll know over long term, at least the capital issues that we got to tackle.
I agree.
So that's what I'm trying to build with this CIP. It's not a, it's not a, hey, we got to buy this this year. It's, it's this longer term planning. I know I got to buy a new fire engine every so many years. I know I got to replace, you know, utility trucks every so often. We know we're going to need new vector truck at, you know, 20 years out or whatever that number is. So that's what I'm trying to build so that we don't show up in a new budget year and, you know, have to holy mackerel, how did we not know we needed a new truck? Well, no, we've been planning for this new truck all along. It's this longer term planning tool. So that's, that's my overall overall madness goal here is to put some order to things where we haven't had order in the past. And so anyway, yeah, thank you, Cindy, for, for that.
So we, we've, we've discussed several things. The, the franchise fees and the interest earned on loans, inter, inter fund loans seem to be conversations that revolve around the, the reserves. Or the alternatives to using that in that manner. I guess I, the, the, the point that I was hearing in, in what Ms. Duffield was describing with, for instance, the, the franchise fees and the interest earned is that with, with those being something that would move forward into reserves for not having been spent in a current year, they then become basically the point of access for the following year for making the application to areas in the general fund that need some additional resource beyond the budget that they've, they've established. And so that becomes part of the budget planning and making the association of those reserves to that area where it's needed. So it isn't like they're, they're dropping off the face of the earth. It's just defining how quickly you want to make that mechanism available or whether you want to use it as an offsetting entry to an allocation of costs that they're getting. Did, did I phrase that in a reasonably coherent way, Pam, that is kind of the crux of the matter?
You did.
So if we were to eventually have any kind of recommendations that we would take out to the board, it would probably need to be able to very specifically identify those offsetting concepts. And a recommendation on, you know, based on input from, from Pam in, in their application. But I, I have to agree too that with Ted, that we're, we're certainly not in a position to be telling Pam how to do her job. I mean, she's the one who's touching these things all the time. And I think that she has an excellent understanding of them. And the issues that seem to come up have to do with the sensitivities that the board has in receiving the information. Which there's no black and white or right or wrong answer on.
And I think that in inter fund loan repayment, you know, the first year it was very heavy in interest. And so I think just seeing that big amount of interest come into the general fund, you know, or be budgeted to have happened in the general fund in that fiscal year, I think that first year would have been 1920. You know, that kind of skewed, you know, the ultimate surplus at the end of the year as well. So I think that just maybe created some angst or confusion in the process as well, because that's just an anomaly. That's something that you know, eventually won't occur. It's not like the franchise fees that are going to recur and recur and recur each year. You know, eventually that won't be a factor in the admin budget one day.
So there, there is one, there is one thing I wanted to, well, number one, verify. The, the pros department. The pros department doesn't really have a district headcount associated with it. The pros is a commission. And they're not a commission that earn a salary from the district. So I have a question about the allocation of any costs that would come to pros based on headcount.
Looking back through the budget for pros. And it doesn't, that's what I said, that we maybe need to look at that. There's some reason historically that they allocated some resources to pros. Because if you look at their budget, I'm looking at actuals for 1718, actuals for 1819 and 1920 and the final budget for 2021. And I don't see salaries and wages budgeted in that department in all those years. Maybe they allocated a person because there looks like there was a large capital project that was happening in 1718 for pros. So maybe a staff member was allocated for that purpose. But like I said, I'll have to go back and see if I can locate the work papers.
Okay.
Establish this plan. You know, in the next years, in 1819 and 1920, the costs in pros were minimal. You know, 30,000, 33,000, but they were mostly costs from the, you know, the overhead allocation were the majority of the costs. The actual costs for services and supplies were very small.
Well, the, the, the distribution of, of cost into pros. Basically, a third of the cost that was coming into them was based on a percentage that was a headcount identification of 1.5%. So I'm thinking that at least in terms of pros and the issue of the costs that are coming to them, that that definitely kind of focuses the idea that that is something that should be looked at. Because I would think just offhand that any kind of, it's in, at least seems logical to me that any kind of headcount that would be associated with pros work content would be coming from facilities and resources.
Ted? Or it could be administration because like, you know, coming down the pike, you know, if it's a grant to manage, I'm probably going to manage the grant. You know, I'm not sure, we're still not sure. So there's a $20,000 grant that the district received from the county for the beautification grant for the restrooms. So, you know, you'll be seeing that in the first quarter's report because we need to budget for that expense and budget for receipt of that grant. But, you know, the question is who's going to manage that project? You know, it's got to be an in-house person that's going to be managing that project. And we don't really have a district wide grants manager. So our project managers. So you know, maybe in that 1718 year, because there was that large capital project, there was an admin staff member that was allocated. Because you know, if you look at the, at that chart, you see three people in facilities. There's pretty much always been three people in facilities.
Right.
And then you see an additional person also tagged to facilities, which is really to pros. So what was the function of that person to pros?
Gotcha. Okay. Ted, did you have a question?
It's not so much a question as, as a comment. It seems to me that pros is, is a project. You know, a place to capture projects for the specific purpose of parks, recreation and open space. It's, it's kind of an oddball because the human activity is through the, through the commission. But, and then as Pam says, if, if we do get a grant, then there's going to be management of, of the grant. But the, you know, if, if you think about building a restroom for $300,000, that's going to be work that's contracted out. So there will be some contracting costs which probably again would fall onto Pam. But it would not involve the direct labor of people in the, you know, within the general fund. you know, within the general fund headcount, except to oversee and manage the project, which, you know, as I say, is probably more of contract administration than anything else.
But we don't have a contract administrator.
Well, Pam, you can add that title to your.
Put it on your desk.
We need to give her, get her a new shelving orientation so it can support all of her hats.
You just earned two. Keep talking, Pam.
Am I, am I correct?
What are you gonna do?
I mean, if, if we're building a restroom, you know, I imagine Carlos or somebody on his crew is going to be walking by every once in a while to make sure that, you know, the construction is on target, but mostly it's, it's, you know, doing the sort of financial administration of, of the contract to make sure the contractors are paid. But doing the construction is going to be something that, you know, well, we would be hiring out as far as I, I can tell.
Ted, I think you're largely right, but I think there's a lot, there's more oversight required by CCSD facility staff. There's just, I mean, if you just look at the homeless encampment removal, we farm, we basically farm that cleanup out. But sometimes almost the entire three-person facility staff is on site when that stuff's getting pulled away because part of the belonging, any belongings have to go in our, what do we call it, trailer? Because we have to take that back to facilities and then drag that back and forth every day for the homeless to retrieve their belongings out for a certain period of time. But the contractor is also doing the cleanup part. So this, there's this sorting that goes out. So in the scenario of a restroom build out, there's still going to be an enormous amount of, of coordination, logistically, if nothing else, to be done with the contractor.
And so then that, that leads to an interesting question, which is, you know, what, what is pros as a department? Does it really have a role as a department? You know, it has a role to capture the, you know, grant and contracted work. But the effort is coming from facilities and resources or from, from the administration department.
Yeah, by effort, I think you mean support.
I mean, the CCSD's, whatever effort CCSD is applying.
Right.
Is, is not directly going to be building the restroom, but it's going to be some, some form of oversight.
Right. And I think, you know, we also, you know, the facility staff would actually write the grant. That's, that's where that execution part of the project comes in. But I think pros is, pros probably needs to get up in the, in the strategy piece a little more to outline the future. What does Parks, Rec and Open Space look like five years from now? And then pushing those ideas at the board. And then the board has to resource that, that plan. That's where that all should probably be. And then facilities and the rest of the CCSD staff is executing on that plan. So we have, for example, and take the east-west, you know, the, the, the ranch. We have a, we have a plan. It's already vetted and environmental is already done. And, and that was over 10 years ago. So why is that stalled?
Money.
Well, there's that, but the pros commission should be advocating, if we're not going to do the whole thing, how are we going to phase it? You know, have all those kinds of discussions.
Right. And it's,
You know what?
For, for the time being, what's happening is some of the general fund is being allocated to pros. And then it's being sucked up in overhead allocation, which doesn't really buy very much in terms of defining what the, what the department is.
Can I suggest that maybe sort of table this and let Steve Miffen come into our next meeting and, and define some of our questions that we have?
Well, Steve isn't really a CCSD employee.
No, he isn't.
The post-commission, the pros commission is a commission. So I'm, he, the, the actions that that commission takes on are, are defined and requested within the CCSD.
So the knowledge is there. It's a matter of getting all that together, basically. I mean, there is a plan, John. And it's implementing all that. I don't know. I don't know.
Just a general statement, and maybe it's been said, but we spend a lot of time talking about pros both here and the, the, the CCSD. Is there a reason it shouldn't be folded in or couldn't be folded in with facilities and just, or somewhere? Because I mean, the amount of effort we spend on this amount of dollars is sort of kick it around a lot. And I just, it's, maybe it's just a piece of something else and then it's just dealt with there. Just a comment.
There's an anomaly there in that we don't have a Parks and Recreation Department. CCSD doesn't. The pros commission was tasked with providing interaction in that regard. And I don't know all of the history, but I have been told by people who have been around since the beginning that there used to be a Parks and Recreation Department, and there also used to be a different kind of support mechanism that existed between the county and CCSD in that regard. And I don't know what any of that is. And I don't know whether there is any opportunity associated with that at all. And my guess would be the way things happen financially now with, certainly for the county and for us also, that the idea of being able to instigate some support in that way would probably be a difficulty.
Cindy?
Yes, Cheryl.
Years ago, the county bought the Phillips property. Were that part of that room. I don't know where that money is, if it's been spent. I have no clue. But it went back to the district. And I think there should be maybe a little, Pam, you might know all the answers to the Phillips property and the district, you know, in charge of that money.
I know. What's the Phillips property?
The Phillips property is where you're going to put the bathrooms and all that. There was horses on it. There was a house back there. There was a water meter. There's all kinds of things that were associated with that property.
So it was, it became part of the east-west ranch.
Right. And I have no clue how that money was separated out. So maybe there should be some kind of a backtrack and find out because the county bought it. And then designated it with, for the ranch. And I think that's where the baseball fields are and all that.
Right. But then, and I do know that, I don't know what the particulars are, but I have heard referenced to the idea that, well, I probably misspeak if I, if I described it. There was a, there was a transaction of some kind that went on with the CCSD receiving that property from the county.
Correct.
And.
A little history might do us some good. I'm sorry.
Well, I think that's a larger question than what we're looking at here. And I agree with you, Cheryl. And maybe that's something to, perhaps we can, in, in talking to, offline and talking to, to Steve, we can certainly, you know, gather some of that information together and, and ask for something in terms of documentation that he may have easy access to that could be made available to us or whatever. But if it's okay with you, what I'd like to do is pursue that offline with either CCS staff, CCSD staff and/or with Steve because.
I agree because there was a house on that property. There was other, there's a water meter. There's other things that were involved in this whole picture.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Track it down.
Track it down. So I have to ask, Duane, have you had or do you have any questions about the conversations that we've been having?
You know, I, I think a lot of this goes back to, it's going to have to be administrative as far as Pam. It's like Ted mentioned too, we don't have any way of knowing what's allocated where. This is a staff issue. And to bring it to us, we, you know, will best facilitate it as what's recommended by staff. That's all we can do. This is kind of out of our preview of having knowledge enough to, to really make any suggestion. I, I don't have a suggestion as to, you know, where this or that should be allocated and I, I think Pam has, has got some real good formulas here. And to look at those each year, you have to, you have to change as, as need changes. There is from one year to the next, you know, it's like, you know, pros had a big project when they did the dog park. And then when that's finished, you know, that's over with. So, you know, you've got administrative costs that would be allocated. Then you just have to move with with the way time allocates, you know, dictates that you do this. Pam and the staff know that. And I think that we've got some real good, you know, formulas to base this on. And we just look at those each year and see if they're still in, you know, accurate. And Pam's the best judge of that.
Yeah, we, we certainly, none of us know all the ins and outs of accounting practices. We, we have a few things under our belt where we've had to run up against them before, but surely the depth and breadth of that resides with Pam. And maybe Ted, I don't know.
I agree.
Okay, well, there are several items that I've, I've heard out of this that have to do with methodology and, and handling of the franchise fees and the interest on the inter fund loans. And then the discussion on pros as a whole. And that, from that, I also have committed to get some background from Steve about that handoff that happened on the property that eventually became part of the east-west ranch that came from the county. And there probably are people other than Steve that I need to access the information from also, but I will, I will commit to getting some info in that. I don't know that there's any specific information that we have as feedback. Or, or is there, does, does anyone feel that there is specific information or feedback to Pam in terms of things that we would like to see or have clarified? Ted?
Well, I'd, I'd suggest that in the policy, the budget policy, that they're not the percentages, but just a description of the approach. And that would then free up the annual budgeting process to, to deal with the specifics rather than having something that's just baked into the policy.
I think it's already outlined there on page eight. There's multiple bullet points that talk about the different reviews.
So to clarify, the policy itself right now doesn't have those percentages. Is that a, the, the pages with the percentages, that's a separate document?
That's correct. So the policy is on page eight, item F, and there's four bullet points.
And Ted, I, I would support that because I think that is, gets, starts to get into operational issues and that allows the staff to make those adjustments, report out each budget year to the finance committee and the board on, on how we've done that. And, and that's the check and balance.
So maybe the only question, going back to the policy and then that area of F, something for us to have a conversation about, once we've determined we're moving on from the, the overhead allocation discussion is the sentence that follows those four bullet points. Where it says each type of administrative spending will review to determine best method, da-da-da. If there's something to annotate there, the frequency within which that review should take place or suggested frequency. So we can, we can come back to that question. I just want to make sure that, that we've finished the conversation that we have on the overhead allocation. Is there anything else to add to that? Or you feel that there are additional actions that have come out of that for any other specifically to be addressing? I don't see any hands or any questions. If that's the case, then I'd like to move back to the budget policy conversation to address the overhead allocation area, because I think that was the only piece that was left open still. So I guess first I'll ask about anyone else's take on my suggestion as far as that sentence after the four bullet points in F.
That makes sense. You're saying to, to put in a frequency of, like, every year, review the actual numbers?
Or, you know, at a men, at a minimum every two years. I mean, we can, it, it doesn't have to be so constrained that we don't have some flexibility in the policy and, and, you know, open to any suggestion, but whether everyone feels. And, and Pam, please, you know, impart your position on this also about putting some kind of reference for having a frequency of review or request or requirement for review.
So maybe that sentence should begin with each year. Each year, each type of administrative spending will be reviewed to determine the best method of the four above to allocate that expense to the operating departments.
Or.
I think you just nailed it right there as, because each year, you know, as things change, that can be adopted into this. So
Right.
That's a good idea.
Even if you keep it the same, you've reviewed it.
Yes.
Right.
And I'd even add, you know, as part of the annual budget process.
So that's in the paragraph below. So that'll kind of be redundant. The next paragraph below says that.
Rather than doing each year, each type, would you consider on a yearly basis, each type of administrative spending?
That's fine.
What's the feedback from others?
Oh.
A yay or an A?
I think that would cover it.
Okay, I can add that in there. So since we're back on the budget policy, I did forget when we were talking earlier to revisit an item from the last committee meeting. So if you look on page seven, the very first bullet, we had a lengthy discussion about that very first bullet. It says, "In April, the board must consider and approve any changes to rates for the following year." So I put a little caption, like a little comment on the tracking of the changes. So I did reach out to legal counsel. And I did go back to our initial rate increase back in October of 2018. Sorry, my computer went to sleep. I want to pull it up to read it to you. So within the resolution that adopted the first of the three years of the rate study, in the very last paragraph of the resolution, it says that, let me get it. "The new rate shall become effective November 1st, 2018, at which point they will replace previously adopted rates." So that sentence right there ends what the board adopted. So the board adopted those, that three-year cycle of the rate increase from the Bartlewell study. And if there was any previous indexing of costs, 2%, 3%, whatever the percentage was in past years, that ends. And all we have in place is that rate increase. And then it goes on to say, "Future rates effective July 1, 2019, July 1, 2020, are subject to annual review by the Board of Directors prior to implementation." So our Bartle Wells was three years and that's all that was adopted.
That's right.
So outside of this, there will be no future cost escalation increase in the rates. That would require a brand-new Prop 218 process to be put in place to do that. And as well, you know, it used to be years ago that you could put, you know, a CPI in place for like, you know, in perpetuity, you didn't have to ever pick an end date. And there was some legislative changes several years ago that you're only allowed to do a CPI for a max of five years without going back to your ratepayers and doing a new Prop 218 study. So just something to keep in the back of your mind. You know, we might want to think about changing that sentence because, you know, it really doesn't apply if there's no rate increase that's pending in the next budget year. We, I think this was put in place because we knew we had to review the rates prior to the July 2019 and the July 2020 increases. You know, the finance committee would need to make a recommendation to the board to support those rate increases going forward. And if they were truly needed. So that sentence may need to be reworked a little bit as well.
Well, yeah, I'll take the other context of if by chance there were a CPI put in place, so there was a 218 that was approved, then the sentence would still be appropriate. And maybe the, it's a matter of saying, "In April, board must consider and approve any changes" to future, I'm trying to say future rates, but there's probably a better way to phrase that.
So it's really unusual to me in my years in, in finance and dealing with water and sewer rates. Generally, when you put a rate structure in place, you put it in place. The board adopts it and it has designated years and percentages where those things occur. And you do that at the time of your Prop 218 hearing process. So it's really unusual to me that there's that sentence in in our ordinance that says the board has to review those rates every year prior to implementation. That, that's just not something that I've seen before. It's, it's just kind of odd. Because if you put a CPI in place, you put it in place. There's no approval that's needed every year to continue it. And if you ever decide you don't want that threshold in there, once you stop it, you can't regenerate it the next year. It stops forever at that percentage. So it's, it's unusual that that language is in our ordinance and it's strange to me that it's in the policy as well. It just seems like the rates and the revenues that come in are just a component of the budget process. They shouldn't, you know, because we don't have any review that the board needs to do in future years, why would it be a separate board action that would take place in April when there's no further need for that?
I think it was part of the politics of trying to get the Prop 218 approved back in, in 2018. That, that the board would have to step up and actually review the, the next year's rate increase. So, so this is, the language in the, in the policy lines up with what the board signed up to do at the time. It can be taken out now, I guess, from, based on, you know, your, your description of what Prop 218 says.
Right. And what our ordinance says. Because we've done our reviews, we've done our annual reviews in 19 and we did it again in 2020. So I think that review has ended. I don't know. I don't know what you're all, you all think about that.
I think you're on a slippery slope.
In what way?
I think this is a, a thing that you need to talk to your legal counsel about before it even comes before the board and see if it can even be done.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Policy, why couldn't it be?
Because you, you can't, I just think it's very, it's a slippery slope and these rates were done by a outside firm and maybe I'm totally wrong on this, Pam, but I don't think you can start adding things to the context of this particular last rate increase.
I'm not proposing to add anything on to it.
Okay.
All I'm saying is that our language in the policy says, "In April, the board must consider and approve any changes to rates for the following year."
That's right.
There's, that period has ended. Because our resolution in 2018, 2019, and 2020 did those annual revisions.
That's correct.
So do we need to carry that forward if there's no new rate in April of 2021 to review implementation of? The rates won't be changing.
It's all over with. All of the two rates have been
It's done. And there's no, so the question, the question came up in the last meeting was, I think maybe Cheryl, you asked the question. Maybe I'm mistaken on who asked the question, on does the CPI that was in place prior to these rates being adopted continue?
I don't remember that.
Once these three years of the large rate increases stop? And, or maybe it was the question of, does the Bartlewell 10-year study, does the CPI continue? And I did check with legal counsel and he said, "We were correct and the board only adopted a three-year rate increase." They did not adopt future CPI along with this rate increase. They did not, and so they essentially did not adopt the entire plan that Bartle Wells presented. They only adopted three years of that plan.
That's, that's right. That's right.
So did that address your concern, Cheryl?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Well, so Mr. Field's recommendation is that that first bullet be removed from the policy.
Or just that we revise the language in some fashion.
That works.
In order for the board, I mean, so the board has the authority at any time to reduce the rates. But once those rates are reduced, they would have to go back to a Prop 218 process to increase them back up. They can't just say like, for this period of time, you know, we're reducing the rates and then we're increasing them back up. They don't really have that option. So they do at any point in time can choose to reduce the rates, but they can't ever increase them past what has been approved by the ratepayers.
So it's, it's interesting because the wording in the resolution that you directed us to, Mr. Field, I, it's, it's, it would be interesting to understand what was really intended in that because it could just as easily have been intended that the three years of the rates replaced the three years of basically the CPI that had previously been voted upon. But with the expectation that any years following that of a CPI would still be in effect, but it was just replacing three-year increment within that. When, I know that that was a, there was a specific years timeframe that, that lower rate, the year-to-year rate increase occurred was the was the application of the 218 rates for the three-year period? Did that take up the balance of what that timeframe was? Because I'm not sure how, how many years in effect prior to that it existed.
Let me see if I can see the previous year. Do you think those were adopted in 2017?
16, I think 16, Pam.
I'm just looking at all the resolutions.
Well, it's kind of a moot point, Pam. That's, that's, that's not an issue that you need to spend time on. It was just, it was more of a
Fishing?
You know, just a, it was, it was just a point of history that was kind of, I had a curiosity towards, so please don't, don't worry about that.
Yeah, if Tim Carmel said "There will be no more increases until the next 218", you know, that's pretty definitive, I think.
Right.
And that's what our resolution says as well, that it replaces everything that was previously adopted.
Okay.
I found the resolution, but it doesn't say the duration. It just says, "Beginning March 1st, 2016."
Okay. Thank you.
Rates are adopted.
All right. Well, I guess back to then the, the policy itself. I guess there were just some minimal additional changes. One was some capitalization and the other was under the F overhead allocation in the sentence just following the four bullets. I guess that's all I'm hearing, that were any suggested changes that Pam could bring back for this document so that our, our next meeting, we can, we can take a look at those and take the policy into consideration to move to the board. Is that the expectation for everyone else?
I agree.
Okay. All right. So Pam, if you could run us, run us through it one more time and, and come back next to next month's meeting and we'll I will take specific action to look at the agenda item to make sure that consideration is part of the the definition. Okay, and
Sorry, so for the agenda item title for next time, you want it to say, "Consideration to approve budget policy revisions"?
Suggested policy revisions, yes.
Okay.
And recommend them to the board.
And recommend to the board. Thank you, Ted.
So I'll probably need to do a staff report to that effect. I can just do a short staff report?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'll do that. That way we're just, it just kind of memorializes the whole action and the policy.
I agree.
So consideration to approve.
Now, I don't know if there's anything additionally that we want to have conversations about relative to pros, perhaps by gathering some of the information that I was going to from, from Steve and from CCSD staff. That would, when I report back on that information, that'll help determine if there's something else that we want to look at or make recommendation regarding. Anything else? Or do we move on to future items? Okay, future items.
Subcommittee, Duane and Ed, I mean, Duane and Ted. Updates.
Start again?
Certified status of the joint. Did you, you do that?
On this agenda and it got missed.
It did.
Actually, on the agenda, we just went by it. Isn't that
It's on D. For Duane.
It's 1A.
1A, yes. We can give a report on that. This is still a work in progress. We are, are making strides in, in contacting the people in Sacramento. And we have meetings that we will be taking place on that and dependent upon what we find out with meeting with people in Sacramento will determine what our report would be on this. So right now, loan funding is available from the state. Grant funding is pretty much limited or almost all limited to small and disadvantaged communities of which we do not qualify to participate in. So as soon as we have our meeting with, with those people, we will have the information available on what might be available as far as loans, interest rates, and so on. So, long story short, it's still a work in progress. But we are making progress, yes.
And Cindy, I can add a little bit to that if I want to. Duane's finished.
Go ahead, John.
So we just had a discussion this morning in the managers' meeting about, you know, what we're heading to. Because we've got two parallel paths right now. We're working at getting bids and final pricing for the SST projects. And parallel to that, we're on the lookout for how we're going to pay for it. At some point, these two paths are going to collide, and we're going to decide what projects we're going to do and how we're going to pay for them. Because not everything on the list is supported by the staff. For example, you know, I don't think there's a heck of a lot of support to build a solar farm right now. It's costly. We don't have the revenues. And the benefit may or may not be adequate for where we are right now. Maybe we push that out a little bit. But at some point, these two projects, these two paths are going to come together. And so I directed the staff to start working toward putting these together to a final report for, for the boards. And so what I mean by that is, and this is, this is up for discussion with both the committee chairman from RNI and from Finance. But kind of what I'm envisioning is the staff will generate a report at the end of the day of, here are the projects we think should be done, and here are the methods by which we think it should be financed. And then we might have, we might consider having a joint RNI and Finance Committee meeting to review that, both of that. Because I think both committees are going to be required for input for these discussions because it's going to, they're different, depending on your perspective. If you're on Finance or RNI, you're going to, you're going to have a view on what has to be done and how it should be financed. And so having everybody together might be a way to sift through that. But that's, that's a discussion we probably all should have.
Yes, I would totally agree with that, too. And that's the reason we're, you know, I was not, staff is being involved in our looking at this and discussing with the people in Sacramento what might be available as far as interest, you know, zero or low-interest-rate loans for these projects. So yes, we've got to all work together in order to make this, this meet and mesh because that's just the way it's got to be done.
I think you're exactly right, Duane. And I also think that the board would, would benefit by, you know, strong input by both those committees working together.
I agree.
Ted?
Yeah, I'll just add a little bit of detail. The potential sources of funding that have been identified are the California Energy Commission, Energy Efficiency Financing, and the Infrastructure Bank, or IBank. And both of these are loan types of financing. On top of that, PG&E had initially committed to help locate financing sources and then stepped away from that over the last year. But apparently recently, they re-upped and said, "Oh, yes, we actually can help you locate sources of financing." So that, there are different, different approaches to finding the financing that are identified. And, you know, so I think that's important for the committee to know. It's not, it's not just abstract conversations at this point. It's conversations with people who have access to finances for projects such as the ones that we're trying to implement.
Okay.
Might add one, one thing to that. With the discussions that we will be having tomorrow on this with the people in Sacramento, we will have a better idea. They do have funds available for these projects. And that, that's all we know at this point. But we will generate some information regarding that. And these are from, you know, the drinking water state revolving fund and the clean water state revolving fund. So there, there are funds available. We'll get back to you as to what the terms are.
As far as timeline goes, add to Duane's extra comments there. We'll probably know by the end of October from PG&E the final tighter budget numbers for each of the projects. So we'll have the requirements pretty locked in by the end of October. And then, you know, in parallel again, we'll have to start assessing what the best source of finance is for each of those, whether it's a combination of grant and loans or what, depending on the individual project, what we've learned to date. And then the process of applying for all this is a whole another animal. And in many cases, as Ted has aptly pointed out in the past, we have requirements that we're going to have to submit to these lenders and grant agencies such as audited financials, which aren't done yet. So we're working through all that. I would add that the audit process related to this is going along really well. So we're, at least for 18, 19. But we're going to need all that backup documentation, information to go forward with the financing.
Okay. Well, we're getting kind of close to our deadline here of 12 o'clock for the meeting. So unless there's some additional information that you'd like to relay, which we can certainly extend the meeting by 10 minutes or something to cover other items if you'd like. I want to thank you both for the feedback on the ad hoc committee report. And I apologize for the stumbling over it earlier. Then I'll move on to future business, future business items.
I just have one item.
Okay.
So we'll need to review the first quarter report draft next meeting.
Already?
Yeah, I know. It's impossible, isn't it?
Yeah.
So it will need to be packaged to go to the board in November.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. That does it then for the meeting this month. Thank you all for the participation and for the active conversation about things that definitely helped to raise some interesting questions to look into and to better understand the mechanisms of a very complex process. So thank you. And Ms. Duffield, thank you for the energy and getting all of that information to us and being able to explain it. That's appreciated, too. Okay, anything else? Anyone? I don't see anything. So that being said, I called the meeting to a close. Thank you all for the participation. Bye-bye.